We, the Bangla people, welcome you to our country. We are the lawful inhabitants of this peninsula for thousands of generations. We are part of this land on which we stand, part of the waters that flow in and around. We are part of the dreaming stories that are connected. The full awareness of oneness with the land and waters will ensure a future for the children of tomorrow. Gariya, Wunaguru Bangala Marina, Yuradamelbu. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to our meeting here September. It's not long to go before the end of the year. In welcoming everyone here, I deliver and pledge our oath. We, the Wire of Council Members, commit to serving the community of which we are a part, and will work together diligently and collaboratively to create a prosperous future in which we all can share. Our traditional obituary notices for those who can or wish to stand. We acknowledge the passing of our residents. Marion Nielsen, Anthony Lawson, Warren McDonald, Kingsley Durden, Geoffrey Hudson, Nellie King, Betty MacArthur, Elaine Taylor, Margarita Minx, John Hobbs, Elaine Ferguson, Tony Zetto, Ray Liebelt, Marcia Redzenavick, my apologies, Gerald Lanyon and Barry Rogers. I'd ask you just to remain standing for a moment. Thank you. Item four, our attendance record, we have two apologies, councillor Campbell and councillor Westerman. We have no leave of absences. Item five, council member executive declarations, 5.1, conflicts of interest. Does anybody have a conflict of interest they feel they need to declare? No conflict, sorry, CEO.
Through the Chair, I have a material conflict of interest in relation to agenda item 20.2.1, being the consideration of the CEO's contract of employment. So I'll be vacating the chamber at the time of that item.
Thank you, CEO. Item 5.2, gifts and benefits. Does anybody have a gift or a benefit they feel they should declare? Councillor Knox.
As a guest of Country Arts S.A., I attended looking for Adam Brandy at the Littleback Theatre. I guess the value would be about $80.
Thank you, councillor. Item six, minutes of previous meeting, 6.1, the confirmation of the minutes of the previous ordinary council meeting held on Monday, the 18th of August. We have a recommendation. I will take the minutes as read. Councillor Knox.
Moving.
And councillor Simpson.
Agreed.
We have a motion moved and seconded. I'll put that motion, those in favour. Against, carried, thank you. Item 6.2, confirmation of the minutes of the special council meeting held on Monday, the 25th of August. Again, another recommendation. I'll take the minutes as read. Councillor Kobbika.
Moving.
You're moving. Do I have a second, please? Deputy Mayor Boarder.
Seconding.
We have a motion moved and seconded. I'll put that motion, those in favour. Against, carried, thank you. Item seven, matters adjourned or laid on the table, there are nil. Item eight, deputations, there are nil. Item nine, positions, there are nil. Item 10, public question time. I do have several questions from a resident. Mr Roger Thompson. Question one, public question time. At Wire City Council's last meeting on 18th of August, why was a member of the public allowed to submit a question statement verbally after the meeting had closed, noting that myself, from the Public Gallery, councillor Knox and others had already moved to the supper area and missed some or all of the statement question? The answer, a local resident attended the August council meeting wishing to ask a question/make a statement and was not aware of council's public question time procedure. The local resident was advised at the time of the procedure and the matters that the resident wished to discuss were not reflected within the minutes as the meeting was closed and the procedure had not been followed. The member of the public has since been provided with a copy of the public question time procedure and additional information regarding public question time and presentations and/or deputations. Question two, public question time. Could council please make a statement at the start of each meeting reminding those in the Public Gallery of the public's questions to council procedure, which can be easily seen online by viewing council's code of practice for meetings? The answer, questions must be submitted to council on the question time template contained within council's public question time procedure. The following statement appears in every copy of an ordinary council meeting agenda. Public question time, public question time protocol. The mayor will read submitted questions on the public question time template at the time of the meeting and will give an officer's response at the time of the meeting. A written response will be given if an officer's response is not available. This wording will be amended to include reference to council's public question time procedure. An excerpt from council's public question time procedure is also provided on the screen at each ordinary council meeting. Question three, the heading of Santosport Brinithan update confidential. Will there be a public report forthcoming from this discussion and if so, when? The answer, it is unknown prior to receipt of the confidential briefing from Santos whether a public report will be provided on a future council agenda. Question four, CEO's action report, page 101. The meeting with Corda Menthra and Sam Crafta, Re Wire Beach Hotel. Will there be a CEO's report of this meeting forthcoming and if so, when? The answer, not at this stage, however, a verbal update will be provided at the council meeting regarding this meeting. And the final question, question five, CEO's action report, page 101. The weekly local government Algal Bloom briefing via online. Will there be a CEO's report of this briefing forthcoming and if so, when? The answer is not at this stage, however, a verbal update will be provided at the council meeting regarding this meeting. Thank you. Item 11, council member reports on the screen as we speak. Do thank members for all the activities they undertake. As usual, an opportunity, a brief opportunity if anybody wants to elaborate on any. No, thank you for your efforts. Item 12, presentations. Unfortunately for our gallery, we do have to go into confidential for this item and then resume our normal meeting. So I do have to ask the gallery to please enjoy some coffee and vikis outside and we'll get you back.
So do need council to do a resolution.
Would somebody care to move that we go into confidence, please? Councillor Pond move, councillor Todd seconded. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against, carried, thank you. Right. Item 13, committee reports, 13.1, minutes of the Audit and Risk Committee meeting, the 8th of August. We have the minutes, take them as read. If anybody wishes to move the recommendation or any comments or questions, councillor Knox.
Moving.
Move councillor Knox. Seconded councillor Todd. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against, carried, thank you. Item 14, reports from council officers, 14.1, office of the chief executive, ordinary reports, 14.1.1, closure of business units and provision of services for the Christmas New Year. Period, a traditional report that comes up this time of the year. We have a recommendation, five parts there. Councillor Knox.
Move.
Move councillor Knox. Seconded councillor Todd. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against, carried, thank you. Another one that comes up at this time of the year. Item 14.1.2, the 2026 Australia Day Awards Judging Panel. Now, we have a recommendation. It is normal for two members of council to also fulfil the role of panel members. So I'm open to suggestions. Councillor Kobbika.
I'd like to nominate.
We have councillor Kobbika. Councillor Pond.
I'd also like to nominate, but I'm happy to give others a go if they would like to.
All right, councillor Inglis.
I was going to nominate, but I'm a bit like Sammy, so I'm happy to nominate as well. So if somebody else wants to have a crack, they can.
Any nominations?
We've got two that indicate.
Yeah.
The two sort themselves out.
All right. Sorry?
Toss a coin between them if neither of them is concerned about it. So the same thing. Yeah.
So it's councillor Kobbika, councillor Pond. So, so moved by councillor Inglis.
Yep.
Seconded councillor Simpson.
Correct.
I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against, carried, thank you. 14.1.3, the ordinary council meetings, December 25 and January 26. We have a recommendation. I'll take the report as read. Deputy Mayor Boarder.
Better move it.
And councillor Knox.
Seconded.
Thank you. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against, carried, thank you. Item 14.1.4, the appointment of council representative at the LG Finance AGM and council member attendance of the Local Government Association AGM. Again, another recommendation report from the CEO. Deputy Mayor Boarder.
Better move it.
And councillor Simpson.
Seconding.
Moved and seconded, thank you. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against, carried. 14 point.
Can I just ask a question, do you wish it?
Sorry, sorry, yes councillor Knox.
I did raise this at a previous meeting and we were going to check with the LGA what they thought about it. And that was about the collection of the levy for the landscape boards, which I always referred to as a tax, which is what it is. I know that we were going to check with the LGA and see what their position was, but I do note in the last week there has been some noise from at least one other council in regard to this collection of the levy by councils as well. So I'm just wondering whether we put the motion in or not.
The CEO.
Through the mayor, we made inquiries with the LGA. Their position has not changed. They believe it's set in stone and it's something that the LGA doesn't, of their own volition, want to re-raise and tackle again. So we haven't put in a motion to that effect for the AGM.
Thank you, CEO. I have a recommendation. Sorry, was there any further comment? Councillor Knox.
Need a recommendation.
All right. Move? Sorry. My head. See councillor Knox, you can easily throw me there. Right, that one was dealt with. 14.1.5, the chief executive officer's action report. We have a recommendation and a very lengthy report with quite a lot of information, which I think we will all be taking note of. Any comments or a mover and seconder? Deputy Mayor Boarder.
Three things, happy to move it, but I'll have a comment and a question. The first one is just to say thank you for providing the detailed notes and all the attachments. I appreciate being informed of those things. And you note on page 51 that governments, this is part of your personal notes that you shared. CEO notes on page 51 that governments are reliant on income tax, which is not sustainable and they need to generate growth slash new income. So my question is, what ideas are discussed, if any, at that senior level of presentation that that could be put to government? So are there ideas around that? So that's the problem. But are there ideas of discussed at a forum like what you attended? And my intent in asking is to try and glean ways to us as a council, perhaps to emulate those ideas.
Through the mayor, look, the comments or notes that I took included some of the material that was presented. So that was a direct comment from one of the presenters. There was some discussion during the course of the summit, as well as roundtable meetings that occurred the day before. We expect that there will be a summary report that comes out of the summit in due course that summarises the discussions and some of the key actions that were discussed at the summit. So when that information comes to hand, that would be potentially the time that it will be clear in terms of what discussions have been made. But certainly in terms of state government's contribution to the discussion about future income streams, they didn't contribute, it was more from the regions.
Councillor Knox.
My question is in regard to the meeting with Corda Menthra and Sam Crafta regarding the future of the motel. Is there anything to report? And can we keep in mind if we're having any further discussions that there is a big chunk of land attached to the motel, which includes a section of the Aderion Gardens? Would it be possible in any shape or form to have that returned to council as part of those discussions?
Through the mayor, the purpose of the discussion was to understand what approach Corda Menthra were going to take in terms of taking the hotel motel to the market. We were, since Corda Menthra took over the administration on a number of occasions, we flagged with them that we wanted to have a discussion about what might happen with the hotel, given that we've got a vested interest, given that sits right in the middle of our foreshore, which we have a foreshore master plan for. During the conversation, it become clear that Corda Menthra are keen to dispose of the asset, which they're obliged to do in order to meet the requirements of their creditors as administrators. However, they did indicate that they were on the same page, for want of a better term, with both the council and the state government wanting to maximise the outcome that is achieved from that sale. To that end, Corda Menthra confirmed that they would be comfortable and facilitate for council to have some input into the collateral that is used to market the site as a future, you know, future development site, as opposed to just a going concern operation. And that once the proposals have been received, that we would have an opportunity to talk to Corda Menthra before they make any final decisions in relation to their divestment decision. The second part, which was the section of land that sits within the Aderion Gardens, we didn't expressly raise that. It wasn't an item that was, that we put forward. However, my initial response is that is separate title. It's in the ownership of Corda Menthra and it is part of the site that they are looking to sell. I don't believe that they would have any appetite to look at a subdivision at this point in time, given that they're about to put the property to market. But we can take that question on notice and see whether they would accommodate that. But given that it is separate title, it's freehold, it's not in council's ownership, I don't think we'll be able to extract that from the, from the sale process. Do you want to add anything?
I can add that although maybe not a land division or a boundary realignment, they may not be opposed to a boundary realignment. However, a land management agreement which acknowledges some of those significant trees in the Aderion Gardens, that they may be supportive of retaining those with a land management agreement, which might cost us a few thousand dollars to introduce.
Thank you. If there are no further comments or do have any motions. Sorry.
Sorry, if I may, just adding in response to the public question time questions, I did want to just provide an update on a couple of other matters that were raised. The local government's weekly updates regarding the Algal Bloom. I indicated that a report is not likely to come back to council at this point in time on the basis that it is basically a day-by-day, week-by-week proposition in terms of what impacts the Algal Bloom is having on the state at large. Fortuitously, so far, touch wood, we haven't had any direct impact in our LGA area, but we note that the state government have obviously pre-positioned the Cuttlefish Bubble Curtain as a mitigation strategy. So other than our tenants, which is to keep watching brief of what other councils are doing at this point in time, there's no other direct action that needs council, report to council at this point in time. And I think that was the only other item that I just needed to cover off on. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, CEO. I have a motion initially put by deputy mayor Boarder.
Very overquestioned.
Yes, certainly.
Just in regards to executive recruitment, what's the latest on that?
Yeah, as the reports indicate, we have not got a suitable applicant for two of the positions, being the general manager of infrastructure and general manager of city growth. I have just been playing phone tag over the last 24, 48 hours with the recruitment firm that I anticipate that we'll have to go back to market on the basis that there weren't suitable applicants at this time for those two positions.
Was there any internal applicants for those positions?
Yes, there was.
And they're not suitable?
No, they weren't.
Could you elaborate a little bit on that as to why not? Because I just see that like there's obviously people that are filling those positions now. Why couldn't they be considered?
Yeah. In this forum, I'm not prepared to have that discussion. I'm happy to go into confidence later in tonight's agenda and to advise in further details. But it would be inappropriate to make comments in a public meeting regarding the suitability of applicants, internal and external, given that we've got a live recruitment process.
And I'll be happy to discuss that in confidence.
Thank you, councillor. Any further questions? In that case, we have a motion that was moved by deputy mayor Boarder. Councillor Knox.
Seconding.
Seconding. Have a motion moved and seconded. I'll put that motion, those in favour. Against, carried, thank you. 14.2, corporate services ordinary reports, 14.2.1, the monthly budget report for August 2025. We have a recommendation. Before I call for a move, does anybody have any questions, as I can refer? If not, does somebody care to move that recommendation? Councillor Pond.
Moving, and I'd just like to thank everyone who put effort into these reports. Again, very informative. I love reading these reports and I think it's really crucial information that our community gets.
Thank you, councillor. Deputy Mayor Boarder.
Seconding.
Seconding. We have a motion moved and seconded, those in favour. Against, carried, thank you. Item 14.2.2, lowly camping fees. Take the report as read, we have a recommendation. Deputy Mayor Boarder.
I have a question.
Yes.
Just putting it out there, have we considered an off-peak and an on-peak rate? I'm just not sure why we're going for a, and there might be a good reason, while we're doing a flat rate throughout the whole year?
That is referred to in the report.
Yeah, so through the, what we've said in the report is we think it would be good to have 12 months of data. And once we've got online bookings, it'll be very easy to look through that data and see what the actual, I guess because of the nature of how we've collected fees in the past, we don't fully, you know, you can guess the peaks around when others move, but different places have different peak times. And so, and because we're setting up the campsites differently to how they've been set up previously, so we'll see understanding which areas are the most popular. Because there are, you know, you might think that, we might, we think the ones near the facilities will be the most popular, but it might actually be the opposite, that the ones further away from the facilities are the more popular sites. So we think that after 12 months, we can look at a tiered booking fee based both on time and location.
So essentially looking for a baseline to start with and then make adjustments after that.
And that baseline has been, it's around the highest on their peninsula. It's in line with the highest one. We think that's reasonable based on the number of campsites that we've got, being lower than some of the other ones and the fact that we have got toilet and shower facilities. So some of those other ones that have lower fees are completely like bush camps, basically. And so, yeah, we think it's reasonable to be at the top end because of the location, but then, yeah, review from there.
Thank you. Councillor Knox.
I'll just make a comment that a lot of places these days charge per head, not per site, it's per head. Because if you've got, say, half a dozen kids with you in your caravan, you're going to use the facilities an awful lot more than just a single person or a couple. So not saying look at this stage, but maybe something look at down the track. I'm happy to move it.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Simpson.
My question was, why don't we, why don't we, pardon me, put in the clause that we increase this fee by CPI every year? Because it's been set out for five years and nobody's looked at.
I'm happy to answer that through the, through the main. So one of the reasons we hadn't put it up for a while was because of the way we collected it. So some of it was done in cash and so you don't want some $12 fee instead of $10 and that sort of thing. So we were actually sort of holding off until this point. We think $20 is reasonable now. Obviously, we'll review it each year when we do our full review of our fees and charges. But as I said, and after 12 months, we'll do that bit of a review about whether we need a different fee structure for the site.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Pond.
I'm happy to second this, but I do have a question. I think this is great and I'm just wondering when we, or if we have a timeline of implementing a system like this at the marina as well.
Thank you, councillor.
Yeah, we have had some discussions internally about that. I think once the upgrade works have happened, would be a good time to have that discussion. Once, so there's obviously the upgrade of the ramp will happen over the next sort of four to six month period. And then that would be a good time to have a discussion around fees, launching fees.
Yes, CEO.
Just add one extra thing, I thought the question was coming, what was the timelines for getting the booking fees in place for the campsites? Just for councillors' benefit, we are looking actively to have the booking arrangements, all the signage, all of the sites designated and set up by 1 December. So it's in place, ready for the summer season coming. So that's what we're working towards at this point in time.
Thank you, CEO. Right, now back to the recommendation. It has been moved by councillor Knox, seconded by councillor Pond. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against, carried, thank you. 14.2.3, public interest disclosure policy and procedure. Rather a lengthy document there, which I will take as read. And before I look for a mover, does anybody have any questions? In that case, we have a recommendation, would somebody care to move it? Councillor Simpson.
Move.
And deputy mayor Boarder.
Good.
Seconded. Put the motion, those in favour. Against, carried, thank you. 14.2.4. Fourteen point two point four. The open space service delivery levels, another very lengthy document with a lot of information. I'll take this read, we have a three-part recommendation. Does anybody have any questions initially or comments? Councillor Knox?
I have a, have a supposed question and a comment, I guess. In the western part of the city, although they look pretty, gazanias are taking over. They're appearing everywhere, footpaths, median strips everywhere, even starting to appear out in, out in the bush now as well. I'm wondering if the weed spraying pro- programme intends to include gazanias. I know they look pretty and probably some people might not like to hear this, but they are spreading everywhere.
I don't know the answer to that. And we do have Tom here. Tom, I don't know if you, yeah. I, I, I don't think the spraying programme is including those, councillor Knox, but I can certainly, um, take that back and ask, uh, the spray crew.
I can assure you councillor, there are some lovely colours out near Cleve of the gazalias. They look magnificent.
No, that's necessary. The case is I think they're hybridising and you're just getting those yellow ones now. There's a beautiful red ones used to get, you hardly ever see anymore.
Uh, any further questions, councillor Simpson?
Yeah, on page two hundred and twenty-nine. They mentioned a timeframe for removing of debris and dumped litter. On median strips and bridges, saying they will be actually within three ninety days. I think it's a bit, bit long. So it's reported it should be, it's saying that it should be allowed of ninety days. I think that's too long. But I can, I might be wrong in my question, but I'll get an answer from somebody, no doubt. I'll have to refer that, I can answer that one councillor.
Can I have a crack at it?
Yes.
I think that excludes illegal dumping. Have I misread that, sorry? Excludes task, litter and debris picked up slash removed, excludes illegal dumping? Am I, am I reading that correctly, page two twenty-nine? Yeah, yeah, that's a fair point, yeah. Oh, yeah, because when you first said it, I thought, gee, whereas if someone puts a big wardrobe there, you want it gone before ninety days, but it mentioned excludes illegal dumping. That was my effort at explaining it, ma'am.
Thank you.
Um, and that is, that is correct, it does exclude illegal dumping. Um, councillor Simpson will take on notice, um, the timeframe for other. Other dumping, yeah, and look at those service levels.
In saying that, I, they do a good job when we report illegal dumping, but it calls us saying ninety days, I think it's excessive.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Pond?
I'd like to move this and I'd like to commend the staff that put all of the work behind putting this report together for us.
Yeah.
I think a lot of work has gone into this and I cannot wait to see where we sit, um, at the end of the review. I think it's going to be crucial information to lead us forward into making sure that we've got the right service level for our boots on the ground.
I certainly concur with that councillor. So we have a recommendation from councillor Pond, Deputy Mayor Border?
Happy to move it and absolutely echo your councillor Pond's comments as well.
Moved, uh, seconded Deputy Mayor Border, we have the recommendation there. I'll put the motion, those in favour? Against, carried, thank you. Fourteen point two point five, rescission of COVID nineteen vaccination policy for council members, if we can remember back then. We have a recommendation. Councillor Knox?
I have a comment to make, and I, I, I agree with the replication of this. But I also think it might be worthwhile for us to develop a pandemic policy. And we don't know what the pande- what the nature of the pandemic might be, but you can rest assured you're going to get another one. And I think we need to have something in place to cover that going forwards.
I'm pretty sure it's in the BCP.
Yep.
Sorry.
I can actually confirm it is in the BCP.
Okay, thank you. Happy to move it.
Well, thank you councillor. Do I have a second, uh, Deputy Mayor Border?
I'm happy to second it, but I'd like to make a suggestion for an addition, which is along the similar lines. Um, and it's to do with signage in regards to one point five metres distancing. Uh, I feel like it's a bit redundant that people are ignoring it anyway. And just on council facilities, whether it's included in this motion or a separate motion, the council remove that signage to, say, keep one point five metres apart?
Do we have that signage?
It's, um, it's a completely different matter, so we can take that second matter offline and deal with it. Or it can move an alternate, um, motion, but the actual policy is specifically in relation to vaccination of electoral matters.
So raise that as a separate motion.
Okay, is it okay if I do that at the end as a, perhaps a motion without notice or?
Yes.
All right, I'm happy to second that.
Have a motion moved and seconded, I'll put it, those in favour, against, carried, thank you. Fourteen point three, City Growth Ordinary Reports, fourteen point three point one, Cuttle Fest twenty twenty-five. We have, uh, take the report as read, information report there. Uh, Deputy Mayor Border?
Yeah, just, I wanted to make a comment and I'm happy to move it, but the economic benefit of Cuttle Fest is outlined on page two sixty-nine in an extra B. And I just believe it's important for the community to acknowledge not only the hard work of council's tourism team. But the eight point eight million dollars in economic benefit for Wala in twenty twenty-four and the projected nine point six eight million for twenty twenty-five. Personally, I sometimes find it hard to visualise the direct benefit, uh, of tourism, but these reports, uh, with the simple numbers explained clearly makes it a lot easier to understand. So, um, I just wanted to make that comment about it.
Actually, if I can just add to that, Deputy Mayor, that is already in the script of, uh, next week's Wild News column and from the mayor's desk.
There you go.
Councillor Simpson?
Seconding and also congratulating everybody involved in the whole process and the results achieved was brilliant.
Uh, fantastic. We have, uh, moved by Deputy Mayor Border, seconded councillor Simpson, I'll put the motion. And I concur entirely with you all about the comments of the standard of the report. Uh, those in favour? Against, carried, thank you. Fourteen point three point two, easement over lot one twenty-eight Arthur Gleny Drive for electrical connection. I have a recommendation, Deputy Mayor Border?
Happy to move it.
And do I have a second to please? Councillor Todd? Thank you. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carried. Fourteen point three point three, the Wala Early Learning Centre Payment of Fees Policy. Take the report as read, if anybody has any comments or would care to move that report. Councillor Pond?
Happy to move, again, very lengthy report, lots of information in there, very easy to read. I have no questions, thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Knox?
Happy to second, but I also note on page two eighty-seven, it's working on becoming cost neutral to council, which I think is very, very important. Given that private childcare, that's private sector childcare centres return a profit or they wouldn't be there.
Yeah, thank you councillor. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carried, thank you. Item fourteen point four, City Infrastructure Ordinary Reports, there are null. Item fifteen, Information Decision Reports, fifteen point one, council members, fifteen point one point one, the mayor's list of engagements. We'll try to answer any questions if anybody has any. Councillor Simpson?
Just moving the project.
Sorry?
Just proposing your, yes.
Oh, thank you councillor. Uh, do I have Deputy Mayor Border?
Seconding.
Seconded, thank you for that support. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carried, thank you. Fifteen point two Corporate Services City Growth, fifteen point two point one, the monthly information report for September. Another very detailed report with a lot of information. Deputy Mayor Border?
Yeah, just on page three sixteen, concluding comments, residents, uh, this is from the report. Residents can help by spraying or removing weeds on their verges. I absolutely wholeheartedly believe, um, in that as well. But a family member of mine was advised that they were doing that and they were told off by another resident that council would not want that due to lack of insurance. Which might be unfounded completely, but I just wanted to, um, ask perhaps that if it's completely fine that we're endorsing that. That that's communicated to the community as, as okay, that if you want to maintain your verge and spray the weeds, that you can absolutely do that, just to make that really clear.
And I've been doing it for years. I take it there's nothing else to add to that? No, no, thanks.
Happy to move it, happy to move it.
Uh, councillor Knox?
Question, yes. Page three one six, the jetty, the HDPE sleeves. Are those sleeves a result of works carried out by council previously? If we go back, there was some contra- controversy as to whether we had done the right thing by removing algae from the jetty pylons or not. So I'm just wondering, is this a consequence of that?
Councillor Knox, it's not a consequence of that. We are continuing to remove the algae. Um, we have a local provider who is doing that work and they've got very specific, um, instructions about how they, how they need to do that. Um, how they need to paint, um, the pylons as well. Um, it's detailed and that contract has actually been let to them today.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you. Looking at the, the recommendation there, we have a recommendation or mover from Deputy Mayor Border. Would somebody care to second it? Uh, seconded councillor Todd. There's no further questions or comments, I'll put that motion, those in favour, against, carried, thank you. Item sixteen, notices of motion, there are none. Item seventeen, questions on notice, there are none. Item eighteen, questions without notice, does anybody have a question without notice? Uh, councillor Inglis?
I'll get a couple. Um, the dredging of the marinas, when's that about to start? Will be done?
The dredging will be here late October, just waiting on.
Which one will be doing first, Point Lowly or the city, uh, Wala Marina?
I think the Wala Marina first, but I'll double check that.
It just, it worries me with the Point Lowly Marina about, you get too many low tides and might be anybody going in and out of there shortly or not. Straight away, but not in the distant future. And the other thing that gets discussed and brought up every year is the parking at Cedar Cove around on the beach, the big beach at Point Lowly in the summertime. Is becoming problematic. It's more and more popular, there's cars parking across driveways of shacks, parking and pushing fences open, driving into sanders and all sorts of things. So we should give consideration to how do we increase the parking capability of that part of Point Lowly. Because on the Santos fence line, there's a million tracks going through there, you know, there's hardly any sanders and bush left. If you, if you've put a drone on and had a look between the last shack and the fence and all the way back along there, that's a not good place for a car park to be set up. Because it's, it's basically people have made it into a, you know, speedway track basically. But yeah, so there is, it's very congested in the summertime, it's very hard to get in and have to get out. If you had to get an emergency services vehicle out there or an ambulance or anything like that, it would be an absolute unmitigated disaster. That's something that needs to be considered.
Well, certainly, thank you for the question. I'll certainly take it on board. Thank you councillor. Uh, councillor Pond?
The Point Lowly Rate Pays Association sent us a letter with some pretty valid, um, concerns in it. Some of them being, um, whispers of a caravan RV park. That will be located in the natural bush, which is habitated by a lot of the animals out there. Also, um, speed restrictions around the playground, so definitely a safety concern. My question is, um, is there going to be a response to that letter and could we please see it? Or is there going to be a meeting? How are we going to address their concerns?
Uh, yeah, in the first instance, um, the administration are going to be meeting with the association to go through the various items. And to discuss, um, potential solutions and then we'll follow that up with a, a letter which we'll provide to councillors.
Thank you.
Thank you, CEO. Councillor Simpson?
My question, I had a question from a resident about the number of steps they're appearing, occurring at the caravan park. I've since had an email from CL to contact them and hopefully get signed. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Klobbaker?
Um, just a question regarding the network infrastructure down the beach. Is that up and going now? What's the story?
Now, so we've got the, um, we've got the design back from the engineer around that. Um, has to go through heritage, um, so, um, working with planning. I'm getting the required information to get planning approval, um, to move ahead.
So how long do you think that would take?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, it's, it, we need the, the images of what we're putting up and then we need, I don't know how long heritage, um, approval will take. But, um, and then we've obviously to then let the contract and. Yeah, so I'm still a little while away, I would say.
Thank you. Councillor Knox?
Um, back in the late nineties, council, um, had a report prepared called Wala Social Profile. I presume most people around the room have had a chance to have a look at that report over the years. It's a very, very detailed report of Wala and the issues that Wala was facing at that time. I'm just wondering if there's been any thought or any discussion in recent times about revisiting that report and having it redone. To reflect what's currently going on in terms of social issues within the city of Wala. I think it's a report that could be very, very useful in terms of attracting funding, uh, into the city. And I think it's also a report which could bring in some partnerships, arrangements to, to fund the report.
Uh, through the mayor, um, I'm aware of the profile, but I haven't seen it myself. But I accept the comment that a, a report of that nature would be, uh, very useful. Um, so I'll take on board to explore what would be involved with either redoing or refreshing, uh, the documents. As a next step.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the input councillor. Any further questions without notice? In that case, moving on to item nineteen, motions without notice. Deputy Mayor Border?
Yes, the motion without notice that council resolved to remove all physical distancing signage at all its facilities.
Thank you for that.
Uh, physical distancing signage at all its facilities. Thank you.
Councillor Todd?
I'd just like to make, to make a comment with regards to that. It's not a requirement of, um, S I health. But it is a, uh, recommendation of S I health, but because of the number of other viruses as well, like influenza A, B. RSV, all the other things that are quite nasty at the moment, it is still a recommendation whilst it's not a requirement. So I actually think that they're, people are either going to ignore them or not, but for some people like myself. It's a good reminder when you go somewhere to just sit back, give people a bit of room, um, you know, I, I don't. Whilst it's still recommended, I don't think it should, that they should be removed.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Knox?
Um, my, um, I'm going to deal with that resolution first, so I had a resolution.
Oh, so you're on another matter. Councillor Simpson?
I'm agreeing with councillor Todd. I think it's, it's an asset to the community to have that signage there. Because they're all just going around the town at the moment. And every month, not just at the moment.
Thank you councillor. In that case, we have a motion that's been, uh, moved by councillor Border. Would somebody care to second it? If there is no second of the, the motion lapses, no second of, thank you couns- uh, deputy mayor. Item twenty. Oh, sorry councillor Knox, missed it.
Two motions I want to put forward. One, the council discusses with Santos. The potential to return the use of Baruna Bay to the community. With a report to come back to council from the discussions. From the discussions. I understand, I understand it might, it might still be part of the collusion zone, but I think if you don't ask, you'll never know. And I don't think it's anything they've even considered either.
Thank you councillor. Motion from councillor Knox, would somebody care to second that? Deputy Mayor Boarder?
I'll be seconded.
If there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, those in favour? Against, carried, thank you.
And I have one other.
Yes.
I had a discussion, when we had the, I had the one-on-one with Justin on the talk, one of the questions that I raised with him was the issue about program maintenance for councils' facilities, particularly structures. And I'm very mindful of the fact, and I have raised it a couple of times in this forum about the corrosion top of the Point Laila lighthouse and action to be taken to rectify that. But I'd like to put a motion forward that a report be prepared on program maintenance plans for council structural assets paying particular attention to assets that are not currently included in such plans. And in putting that forward, I remember the council back in the nineties paid Conall Wagner a substantial sum of money to prepare that type of plans for all of its assets. And it did maintain that report for a number of years. And in fact, there was a council employee who was charged with making sure that was maintained. And sometime in the early two thousands, it went by the wayside. And I think it's something that should be brought back, so hence the resolution.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Pond?
I'm happy to second that.
You're seconding. If there's no further comments or questions, we have a motion moved and seconded. I'll put that motion, those in favour? Against, carried, thank you. Do we have any further notice, motions without notice? Otherwise, we come to item twenty, consideration of confidential items. Do you wish to break or keep going? Quick break. Would somebody care to move that we take a ten-minute break and resume at ten minutes past seven? Yes, ten past seven. Move councillor Pond, seconded deputy mayor Boarder, I'll put the motion, those in favour? Against, carried, thank you, ten-minute break. Oh, would somebody care to move that we reconvene the meeting? Move deputy mayor Boarder? Seconded councillor Simpson? I'll put the motion, those in favour? Against, carried, thank you. Somebody care to move that we go into confidence? Move councillor Todd, seconded deputy mayor Boarder, I'll put the motion, those in favour? Against, carried, thank you.